Okay, Madam Chair, we're live.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone, to the Napa County Board of Supervisors meeting for June 16th, 2025. I'm calling this meeting to order. Can we have roll call, please, Neha?
Vice Chair Manfree?
Here.
Supervisor Ramos?
Here.
Supervisor Lassio?
Present.
Supervisor Gallagher?
Here.
Chair Cottrell?
Here. Can I ask Carol Brunzel to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. So, I want to, before we move on to our public comment, just remind everyone why we're here today. In general, the county has held a first budget meeting and then two weeks later held the second budget meeting last year. In the interest of allowing more public access to the budget process, we instituted an evening meeting, which is where we all are this evening. So, thanks, everyone, for being here. The goal is to allow more members of the public to attend, and it also gives the board a chance to go through the budget twice. And we also, this is a little bit more of a focused meeting. We don't have a pet of the week. We don't have any proclamations. And we don't have a scheduled board report out, but I will also welcome any comments if anyone from the board wants to make a comment at this point. So, I will open it up for any comments the board might want to make. Anyone? Okay. Well, people are ready to get into it. So, at this point, then, I will go ahead and turn to public comment. And first, Ms. Hoskins, do you have an announcement about the phones?
I do. Today, our public comment phone line is not working. It's under construction, if you will. We're going to reevaluate the situation. Hopefully, have it up and running soon. In the meantime, feel free to contact us through our public comment email, publiccomment@countyofnapa.org. Reach out to your district supervisor or all supervisors and copy the clerk of the board. Or you can call the clerk of the board office and we can help you otherwise at 707-253-4580. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Hoskins. Is there anyone here to make public comment on an item not on the agenda today? Any non-budget item? You may make public comment now. Come on forward, and if you could state your name and keep your comments to three minutes, please. Good evening, Ms. Malin.
Good evening. Chris Malin, 2945 Atlas Peak Road. Two days ago, I got a supplemental environmental impact report for a flood wall from River Terrace to the Elks Club, about 2,500 feet on the west side. And that was, and there's only a 30-day comment period, and I think that's really unfair to the public. And I know the Army Corps of Engineers is the lead agency, and the Napa County Flood and Water Conservation District is the sponsoring agency. There's so much environmental damage that happens with flood walls that to have a 30-day comment period, to me, is not fair. It's not fair to the public. It's not fair to the wildlife. It's not fair to the river. And I don't know how this happened. I know there's a lot of history with the flood project because I was one of the founding members of the Napa River Flood Management Project in 1998. And we literally stood our ground on the Army Corps, putting in cement ditches through downtown Napa. And we were successful at that, but there were other stages to the project that got put on hold due to the cost. And so, now these flood walls are reemerging. So, it didn't appear that the general public got the whole information about this comment period. And I want to know who to talk to in the county about extending the comment period because the deadline is Friday. I think that we need to really have a robust comment period because the Napa River is an impaired river due to sediment, pathogens, mercury, PCBs. And we have to be careful, the kind of projects we do, so that we don't cause more harm. And I know the flood wells are going to take out a lot of trees. And most of the river is a one-tree standing on both sides. And that's because we've removed 95% of the riparian zone. So, our river is under great demise. And we have to be careful what we do. So, we have to take those long comment periods. And usually, the public gets 60 days on an environmental impact report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Malin. Anyone else to make a non-budget comment this evening? Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Phil Rapp. I'm the Board Treasurer for Community Action of Napa Valley. And Community Action of Napa Valley are CANV, celebrating 60 years serving Napa County. Started by President Lyndon V. Johnson in 1965 to end poverty. CANV and its programs continue to serve this mission today. The CANV Food Bank, in the month of April, served 3,678 Napa individuals and families. We delivered 324 Silver Fox boxes and nine to 12 staples twice a week to Napa seniors. Meals on Wheels delivers 444 meals to Napa seniors who cannot cook for themselves on average. At our congregate site at Napa Senior Center, seniors can have a hot meal every day. On average, we serve 40 individuals there. In addition to these statistics, our free market distributions, which our sites in Napa neighborhoods distribute fresh produce and staples. These free market distributions serve 4,825 Napa residents. In the month of April, 241,995 pounds of food was distributed throughout Napa County through CANV. To learn more about the programs we offer, or to schedule a tour of the new food bank, go to canv.org. We also do tours of the food bank every third Monday of the month at 10:00 a.m. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about the services we provide to Napa County residents and supervisors. Thank you for your time. And one last thing, I'm sure most of you have already visited the new food bank, which I'm very happy about, and we appreciate all of your support, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Rapp. Anyone else for general public comment, not budget-related? Okay, then we will move on to our main event. We are now on Item 4A, which is to open the public hearing to accept testimony on the fiscal year 2025-26 recommended budget. And then, we will continue the hearing to tomorrow, June 17th. So, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. We'll get a presentation from staff, and then I'll open it up for public comment. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm going to kick it off, Madam Chair, and then I'll hand it over. So, good evening, everybody. We're here this evening for the first of our budget hearings on our county's FY 25-26 budget. That's next fiscal year's budget. As you know, preparing the budget starts long before tonight, going all the way back almost six months to January, where we had our budget prep kickoff with county staff. Again, that's in January. Putting a budget of this size together, the book is about 650 pages, is pretty complex undertaking, as a lot of people can imagine, requiring a great deal of effort from county staff. So, I want to thank our department heads for their leadership and all of the work that they and their staff have put into the recommendation before you, Board. And I would also like to thank our auditor controller, I think I saw her sitting in the back for her, and her staff for their counsel. And last, but not least, I want to thank Ms. Craig for her leadership and our entire budget, our entire budget team in my office, led by our CFO, Mr. Bozilich, and Alice. I know Alice isn't here, but Alice, Daniel, Jasmine, Celeste, sitting here in the front, I want to thank you. And I want to congratulate all of you on getting the distinguished Budget Presentation Award for the current fiscal year. That was important to get from the Government Finance Officers Association for the work, transparency of the budget. And it's a first recognition in recent memory for the county, and I think it should be the standard going forward. And I know you agree as well, so I appreciate your leadership on that. The budget recommendation before us this evening is focused on building and sustaining a stable and resilient organization. It is informed by long-term planning and an understanding of current economic conditions. It builds on progress made over the past year, investments in our workforce, in public safety, infrastructure modernization, and advancement of key capital projects, and maintains stable momentum while thoughtfully navigating fiscal realities. Property tax revenues remain steady due to modest growth in assessed values. Other revenue streams to the county are underperforming. Sales and transient occupancy tax revenue are not meeting expectations, and we project them to remain relatively flat. Softening consumer demand, coupled with the instability in global trade and export markets for our wine industry, remain a trend that could continue to impact the vitality of local business along with county business along with county revenues. The state of California is grappling with a significant fiscal challenge. The state faces a $12 billion budget deficit for the upcoming fiscal year due to escalating programmatic costs and an overall slowdown in economic growth. There is extraordinary unpredictability of intergovernmental support, particularly from the federal government. With these conditions and challenges, the recommended $967 million budget is balanced. It maintains a strong and best-practice level of reserves for emergency use. It has a healthy fund balance for fiscal and operational uncertainty, sets aside significant investment for essential capital improvement, and continues to support core services while also making strategic investments in long-term priorities. It continues to fund compensation agreements with SEIU and other bargaining units approved by your board, including compensation increases for IHSS workers. The opening of our new jail. It sets aside funding for needed expansion of workspace for certain business functions of the county. It invests nearly $30 million in road and bridge improvements, resurfacing or rehabilitating approximately 25 miles of local roadway. The acquisition of Camp Coombs in Skyline Park, which continues to preserve open space and expand recreational areas. A new behavioral health treatment center to significantly expand care for individuals with mental health and substance abuse challenges here in our county. A new three-year agreement with CAL FIRE. And it continues investing millions of dollars in wildfire prevention work across the county through partnerships with groups like the Napa Community Firewise Foundation. That's it. Those are my comments this evening. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Bozilich and Ms. Craig to handle the more detailed discussion. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Board of Supervisors. As our CEO, Mr. Alsoff, has said, we're here to present the recommended fiscal year 2025-2026 budget. I wanted to echo some of the thanks. We have the executive office staff here that participated in putting the budget together along with our department heads, their respective budget teams, and then definitely our auditor controller's office for their help in compiling the information for this budget and a lot of the background calculations. So thank you very much. So the first slide here is just a moment to celebrate. The Napa County did receive the distinguished budget presentation from the Government Finance Officers Association for the fiscal year that we are about to complete, so 2024-25. And the Government Finance Officers Association puts out a series of best practices that we do our best to follow. Those best practices inform everything from the layout of our budget book, how the funds are presented in a fund-by-fund layout, and a number of other structural and informative efforts, such as adding the capital improvement plan that you saw this spring. That has been added into the budget book for this proposal as part of ongoing efforts that we had already initiated. And then it was further confirmed by feedback from the Government Finance Officers Association. In putting the budget book together, we use a software product called Gravity. This is our second year using that product. And we continue to make improvements as we go along. The data for the book is pulled directly from the countywide financial platform. We expect the award to be continued again in the future. After we have an adopted budget book and finalize the adopted book for the public, we will submit it in, say, August or September to the Government Finance Officers Association again, and expect that the recognition will continue for the new year. And this is just a good example, too, of the ongoing quality improvement efforts that we are making in the executive office and countywide. As I touched on earlier, adding the capital improvement plan was a quality step forward. And then some of the other changes that we've made are calling out specific capital projects, construction projects, and including those in the budget from the outset here today in the recommendation, rather than adding them as we go, like in the middle of the year. So this slide speaks to the life cycle of the budget process. It's a very common question that comes up in terms of, okay, when are we going to see the budget? You know, we're in May, we're in June. When can I see it? And I think it's a good moment to take a reminder and outline that budgeting and forecasting really is an all-throughout-the-year process. We begin in the fall each year with our internal service programs and departments. Those are the, what are sometimes referred to as overhead departments. They need to develop their budget assumptions early so that we know how much will be allocated to our operational departments that are directly serving clients. So that all takes place in the fall. In January, we have an official budget kickoff where we meet with department heads and their budget team to go over any budget policy updates. Rolling into February, we do our mid-year report to the board along with a five-year forecast of trends that we're seeing in terms of revenue assumptions. March and April really is the final number submission and balancing process from the departments where the executive office has to look at how are the requests aligning to the resources that we have available. May is our deadline and goal to publish the recommended budget book. The book that is before us today was published on May 30th for review. And then we transition into June. It's, we've done, doing the two hearing days for the recommended budget, and then followed at the end of June for final adoption on the 24th. And even though mentally we might think of that being kind of the end of the budget, it does really continue into July, August, September, where the close of the current fiscal year and how the actual and estimated expenses and revenues end will potentially have some impact on the recommended budget. That process is where we will gain additional insight in terms of fund balance available. And we will submit the book, as I mentioned or previously, to the GFOA for consideration. This highlights the budget in grand total excluding special districts. We will have separate hearings tomorrow in the afternoon to touch on each of the special districts. The grand total budget recommended is $967 million. And you can see here a layout of the types of funds that are being presented in the recommendation, starting with the general fund. This is departments that are primarily supported by discretionary revenues within the general fund, as well as monies that are transferred to other departments. But the general fund is where the board has the maximum amount of discretion in terms of house spending. And that budget proposed is $341 million. Moving on from the general fund, we have the operating special revenue funds. These are departments where they may receive a general fund contribution, but typically the bulk of their funding comes from external sources. And then those departments braid and weave the revenues to serve the clients within their program areas. Non-operating special revenue funds, I like to think about those somewhat as a temporary savings account, if you will. Those are monies that arrive to the county under agreement, where there is a very specific defined purpose for how those funds are to be used. They have a restricted intent. The monies sit in the non-operating special revenue fund until we're able to confirm that there is an allowable source for how those funds could be used. And when those allowable uses are identified, the funds are transferred from the non-operating special revenue fund into an operating special revenue fund or the general fund department. And moving on, we have capital projects fund. This is money intended for construction and transfers to departments that support construction efforts. This touches also on roads and bridges, as our CEO mentioned. The debt service fund, it's a very small amount. We only have one bond outstanding currently. Enterprise funds, these are business-like activities that the county has, such as the airport, the parking garage, and the animal shelter, where they could be looked at as essentially operating similar to a business might. And then our internal service funds, these are department operations where their primary customer is essentially other county departments. So like IT and property management, they are there to serve the other clients, other departments, with those departments then serving the public. And those costs are allocated each year. So this slide with the pretty colored donut looks at the, some of the revenue sources for the general fund. So we can see here that property taxes, not just property, all taxes are the largest source of revenue to the county. So taxes here includes property tax, but also includes sales tax and transient occupancy tax. And then descending order, we go into licenses, permits, charges for services, is about 15%. Intergovernmental is our state and federal funding from the outside is about 11%. And then other financing is transfers in, and the recovery of indirect costs is about 8%. There's definitely been interest lately on the federal funding portion of the intergovernmental revenue. And the general fund has a very small exposure on federal funding. It's around $4.8 million, or 1.6% of the general fund revenue in total. This slide with the columns shows, this is looking at now a little bit more detail just within the tax revenues, as we touched on, the property tax, sales tax, and transient occupancy tax. And there is some variation over the years, but the general theme is that we can see a rising trend and growth from fiscal year 2015-16 up through 21-22. And then from fiscal year '22 onward, it's relatively flat and has not seen any substantial growth. There's some mix there. The property tax does tend to increase year-on-year, but there is variation in the sales tax and transient occupancy tax. And the final two columns on here showing our current year '24-25, as well as the '25-26, are estimated values and will be updated as we get closer to closing the fiscal year. So pie chart, where does the money go from the general fund? So this is not a percentage of the total budget. This is looking at total general fund budget. This is looking at the net county cost after excluding any other revenues that have been received. So just looking across the percentages here, if we look at public safety in kind of a broad group between sheriff, corrections, probation, fire, it equates to about 50% of the general fund's budget. Moving down from there, we have our Health and Human Services Agency and the Housing and Community Services Department. These are separate departments, but are clustered here just for presentation purposes. It's about 16% of net county cost. And then declining into Planning Building Environmental Services and Groundwater, 6%. Capital Outlay, also 6%. Public Works and Road, 5%. And then we have a cluster there in the top-left corner for everyone else who individually are less than 3%, but equate to about 17% of general fund net county cost. So expenditures by type, this is for the general fund as well, maintaining that focus. The salaries and benefits are about 52%. Services and supplies, 24%. Other financing uses, 21%. And then the other charges, special items and capital assets, capital equipment, in this case, is about 3%. And just dwelling a moment on the other financing uses, the 70 million there, 21%. This is predominantly transfers made by the general fund that are made to other departments in the county. And those receiving departments then in turn also spend it towards their own salaries and benefits and services and supplies. So we wanted to touch on, there's two slides here, just some of the pressures that the general fund is facing. Some of these are one-time items, other ones are ongoing. The cost of living adjustments just within the general fund is approximately $4 million. The countywide figure would definitely be larger than that. The replacement jail operation is about $3.7 million ongoing. There are increases to the jail medical service contract that are partially represented in here, but that would also be impacting the juvenile system. NCFF wildfire mitigation, we have $3.5 million. And then this final line doesn't get looked at very much, but is having a significant impact on all counties and cities. But this is the general liability expense, essentially for insurance and reinsurance. And that's a $2.1 million increase. But on average, that has grown by nearly 20% over the last few years, and I think tripled from where the cost was five or six years back. And this is touching on some of the, like I mentioned earlier, about the transfers that the general fund makes. So the Health and Human Services Agency is being proposed for a $33 million transfer. The capital projects is $27 million in expensing. There's $15 million new money there, and the 27 consumes that 15 million-plus additional fund balance that had already been there for the purpose of capital projects. The fire department has $9.5 million in expense. Road maintenance, $5.3 million. Housing and community services, 4.7. And then the groundwater sustainability agency, $2 million. This slide speaks to reserves and designations. So these are essentially fund balances by a number of purposes. But we definitely made a lot of effort this year in looking at the general reserves. General reserves currently are in the $64 million range. The budget recommendation in front of you is increasing that to $66 million to align with the budget principles that were presented. The fiscal uncertainty, that had been cleared to zero in the current year as we were moving around designations. But in looking at the uncertainty at the state and federal levels, we thought it prudent that we add $10 million in reserves here for, specific to fiscal uncertainty. The Section 115 trust has $22.9 million. This is money that is available to offset future pension expenditures. As the county's liability grows, the money is there to use towards that purpose. Declared emergencies, we have $8.8 million. At tomorrow's board meeting, our auditor controller has an agenda item coming where she'll be presenting additional information specific to FEMA and the reimbursement process and the timing. and the reimbursement process and the timing of expectations on monies received, yet to be received, and when they might be released as they sort of time out from their audit liabilities. The Tobacco Master Settlement Agreement has a designation. The Ag Commissioner Capital Improvements, loans and advances receivable, public protection programs. And then future expenditures are really existing encumbrances from contracts that are already in place that may have an amount carried forward into the upcoming fiscal year. Most of these are known amounts as far as being recommended in this budget. Specifically, the Tobacco Master Settlement Agreement number and the future expenditures number will be adjusted up or down as the current year spending becomes known. So those will be adjusted to actuals as we get into the new year. So through this series of assumption, we've done a conservative estimate of having 56 million fund balance available in the general fund. That is the amount to start the year. And then these designations will have an impact on any of the, the net of the changes. On the, on the fund balances will affect that available use or available fund balance plus the proposed spending from fund balance in the new year. So all of those items together end with fund balance estimated just over 10 million at the end of fiscal year 26. This touches on operating special revenue funds. As I mentioned previously, these are departments where the majority of their funding comes from outside sources. We have the Health and Human Services Agency with a recommended budget of $190 million. We're going to invite up Director Yasamoto here in a few moments to speak to some of the highlights for HHSA. The library has 22 million. Housing and Community Services, 17 million. Affordable housing, 19 million. Roads, 23, almost 24 million. Our fire department, just shy of 35 million. And then other departments such as building, code enforcement, child support, also just shy of 15 million. So grand total on operating special revenue, 322 million. So at this time, I'd like to invite forward Director Yasamoto to speak a few words about Health and Human Services.
Thanks, Mr. Muslilich, and good evening, Director Yasamoto.
Good evening. Jennifer Yasamoto, Health and Human Services Agency Director. And let's see, the CEO's office asked me to speak at a high level for two to three minutes. I know that's going to be a challenge for me, everyone's going to start laughing, about some of the pressures that are impacting Health and Human Services agencies across the state, of course, but also here in Napa. You know, we're getting a lot of really good things done. And no surprise, the CSAC document meeting, the mandates, really highlight some of the pressures on local government. And that actually happens across all the sectors. That booklet's pretty big, but in particular, it shines a spotlight on Health and Human Services because we know that our revenue sources are just not keeping pace with the demand and the need. So I guess I'll just start off by saying that 33 million investment is a well-spent investment and is a fraction of the agency's overall budget. And we also know that investments that we make in the safety net pay off dividends because these are front-end investments that the costs that you save on the backend are oftentimes hard to capture. But they are human costs and they're also financial costs. So I appreciate the opportunity just to talk quickly about those three items that are put up there. And so the first two are really specific, and the last one is just sort of like the mother load of everything else under the sun. So first on IHSS provider wages, as your board knows, in, if we look back two years ago, we had a very different wage compensation. Your board in May of last year increased the wage. It is now at $20.50. It was previously, if you look back two years prior, was at $16.95. And so that is a pressure, it is a great thing to have done. When we look at, if you go back two years to today, the increase to Health and Human Services budget, and in that case, that is County General Fund, is an increase of 1.8 per year. And that actually, that number will continue being a 1.8, and it grows 4% because there's a 4% inflator. So I just share that to say, when you look at that number 33, right off the top, 6.7 million of that are IHSS MOE, which is our maintenance of effort. And that's what we're paying to pay our providers who take care of our residents in times of need. So I think when we look at that number, sometimes it's really helpful to put it in context of where that's actually going. The other piece that ties into IHSS provider wages that I may as well just mention here because it's on the topic instead of mentioning it under the third bullet, is IHSS administrative costs. So that's not the cost to pay the providers. That's the cost for county staff to actually run the programs, to do the work, to get people on IHSS, to authorize, to reassess, to do all of that work. That has also not kept pace, and your board is aware of that because not infrequently, all of the counties across California are lobbying and advocating for how our IHSS admin dollars can actually meet the need and demand across all of our counties. So I add that as a pressure that's related to the provider wages because without county staff managing that whole book of business, there is no IHSS provider program. There is no wage to actually get out. So that's a really important thing. And we know that our, because Napa's population of older adults is growing and it is higher than the state average, that you can just anticipate that our reliance upon the IHSS program is going to continue to grow. And actually, we've seen that. We've seen, I think, about a 26% increase in IHSS provider recipients, recipients over the last two years. So that's one, and I'm probably sure I'm already at two or three minutes. Inpatient hospitalizations, this is another one that's important to note because it's something that happens in the background, right? We are constantly managing levels of care for those who have, struggle with mental health issues. What you don't always see is sort of the ecosystem. And there was actually a RAN study that was done in 2021 that talked about the, that there are approximately 8,000 bed shortage across the state of California. And that's not just a statistics, that's something that actually plays out day in and day out, boots on the ground in our agency, where we are trying to have clients placed where they need to be placed, and there is just a lack of beds. And so where this actually ties into is something I'll talk about later too, is in our crisis stabilization unit. That is really the entry point oftentimes for putting our clients into the level of care that they need. So they are contending with this ongoing shortage of beds. And within that is a shortage of Medi-Cal beds because sometimes you can find a bed and it's a private pay bed. So you may have to put a Medi-Cal client into a private pay bed. Guess what? Medi-Cal pays nothing. It's all county dollar at that point, or realignment, which we know we're outpacing the growth in realignment, which isn't there. So just in terms of some statistics there, if you look at just the number of clients we've placed in facilities, and this is across different facilities. So there, the Medi-Cal hospitals, the non-Medi-Cal hospitals, our IMDs, our psychiatric health facilities, our board and care, and our adult residential, that number has doubled in five years. So we were sitting at about 190, we're sitting at about 380 just in this current year. So that adds an entirely different level of complexity, not only in client care, but in levels of care and in cost. Because we are increasingly relying upon dollars that just aren't there. There's no revenue for these clients. And yet, our county, of course, like all counties, want to make sure that our residents have the best care and the care that they need to be well, and then hopefully return back into our community at lower levels of care. That doesn't happen without this higher level treatment. And sort of the other piece at the same time, which is probably not lost on you, the cost of doing the care is greater, the number of indigent care clients that we have who don't have any health insurance, and so that also gets picked up by the county. And then going into sort of enhancing services and underfunded mandates, because I think it's both, right? Some of these things are mandates, and some of these things aren't mandates, but they are things that we are doing to enhance quality of care because we are trying to divert people so they don't end up either in the jail or in the hospital or at higher levels of care that are not where anybody wants to be but needs to be, that is also costly care. So we go through the enhancing services, because I was thinking about sort of the pressures, but also these are services that we should be celebrating, that we're doing in our community. Because for a smaller community, Napa County is doing a lot of really good work. And I know your board knows that. Just running through some of them, mobile crisis response. We started that in 2022 before it was a mandate. And we started it because we knew it was the right thing to do. Our law enforcement partners needed our support. Our emergency departments needed our support. And quite frankly, our community and residents needed our support. Then came along the mandate. So the mandate started January 1 of 2024. I will tell you, it is a costly mandate. The requirements and the reimbursement, counties are not breaking even. And we've explored whether a regional model makes sense. We can't do a regional model either because of the requirement to be in response if needed within 45 minutes. We have a long and narrow valley, right? As it is, we're struggling sometimes with traffic to get, to meet that. But when you look about the requirements, first of all, you actually have to have a call, right? There are times when there's no sort of calls, right? So you're sitting without any revenue coming in. And then you have to meet three specific criteria to actually draw down the revenue. And the revenue is only available for Medi-Cal clients. And yet, it's a payer-blind system, so we serve everybody. So right there, you could already see the structural problem with the financing behind this program. So that is a program that, again, wonderful, terrific, one of our hallmark programs. It's underfunded, even though the state will say, well, there's a mobile crisis benefit. We also have mental health diversion that we started in 2024. That is not a mandate, and it's absolutely the right thing to do to make sure that people who don't have money in our community have the access to the same services and supports and opportunities to divert out of the criminal justice system as people who have means and resources and can afford private lawyers and private therapists. So that's a program that we're really proud of, and we're working very closely with our public defender and our DA's office and the courts. But that's an example of something that we're doing, that it's hard to quantify the backend cost of the, what you're saving because you don't have somebody who down the road. All of these programs and services are designed to intervene at the earliest point possible so we can change the trajectory of somebody's life forever. Then we have the CARE Act that started in December of 2024, as your board knows. Our numbers aren't big, but we have intervened and assisted with seven people. I'm told we have two petitions filed. But that's also seven people who wouldn't maybe have the benefit of or feel the need to comply with treatment that we're outreach to, that we're spending time with. And a lot of what we're doing in these forensic programs is not compensable, even if you have a Medi-Cal client, because the time you're spending outreach, the time you're sitting in court, the time you're spending writing court reports, much of that in both of those programs, there's no revenue. Then I mentioned before our crisis stabilization unit. So there's also a lot of rules and requirements to that one. And for any person who's placed in the CSU, whose stay exceeds 20 hours, we have no Medi-Cal dollars. The state cuts it off at that point. So you can see, when I talked earlier about the lack of behavioral health beds and infrastructure, you can see where you pretty much can easily end up with sort of a patient flow problem, where if you can't place patients because there aren't beds, then they're sitting in the crisis stabilization unit. You're also losing revenue there. So we do our best, but a lot of these things are really out of our control. And although the state is making investments through the B-ship grant in behavioral health infrastructure, it's going to be years and years in the making before that infrastructure is built out. The dollars don't just show up, and then the beds, poof, start to appear. So things will get better in the horizon, we hope, and that's just a practical reality of the triaging, but also triaging and managing to really good quality of care and compassion as we do it. We also opted in, and so CSU was new in 2017. There's no requirement to have a CSU, but we have a CSU, and we're actually even expanding the CSU to ensure that we can treat and provide efficacious care for our youth through a youth treatment milieu. That also is going to add capacity, but it's also going to add cost. We, as you know, are one of the counties who opted into the Drug Medi-Cal Organized Delivery System waiver. And that's a really good thing because it provides for a continuum of care from the lowest level all the way to residential withdrawal management. And it comes with a cost, right? Building out these continuums of care, we have recovery services. So when you're doing outpatient treatment, you've got recovery services as you end your outpatient treatment. We have the residential treatment program. We now have recovery residences. So when you're leaving residential treatment, you're not going to homelessness, you're going to a supportive environment that increases your likelihood that you won't have a relapse and go right back into the very treatment program. Related to residential treatment, however, is another thing that's happened in the last two years, and that is payment reform. And payment reform was a tectonic shift in the way behavioral health services are compensated and paid for. In the old model, which was the model that had existed forever, it was a cost reimbursement model. Now we get a set rate, and the state tells us what that rate is. One of the many issues playing out with our rate, though, is in our residential treatment and withdrawal management, our rate is less than we pay our providers. So every day, we are bleeding out money to do the right thing and to provide care. That red line, if you will, grows when capacity grows. So yes, we also, on the other hand, need to expand capacity to make sure that our Prop 36 mandate and new treatment felony clients who need the treatment have a place to go. And so absolutely, the investment in the Behavioral Health Treatment Center was the right thing to do. It provides that long-term sustainability, and it's another pressure point on revenue. We are advocating with the state, we've been advocating with the state for two years to increase the rate. We're not the only county in that situation. But this is just another example of the complexity, the mandate, and the ecosystem of how we navigate maximizing revenue that in some cases, we're just, the playing field is not a fair playing field right now. We've also stood up a high-fidelity wraparound services in 2024. That didn't exist either. For some of these programs, one of the key things is going to be, when Behavioral Health Services Act comes to town in a year, how we effectively use those dollars to fill in some of these treatment gaps. And that's why the allocation and the small county exemption to keep dollars for treatment is going to be really significant because we need to fill all of the cracks in our funding with as much of the BHSA revenue as we possibly can. The last thing I'll say, because I know I'm way over two to three minutes now, is the IHSS allocation, the CalWorks allocation and the CalFresh allocations that we get, they're not keeping pace either. Those are our social services programs. And you know, if you look at the proposed state budget, there's also other gifts in there that are going to result in funding cuts. So we are paying attention to all of these things, but I cannot stress enough how we're spinning lots of plates, we're doing the best we can. I think we're doing a wonderful job. The 33 million is an absolute necessary investment. And I'm just going to say now, it's going to have to grow in the out years because when you look at all that we're doing and the increasing mandate, unless the state and CSAC can arm wrestle more dollars and a different funding structure for literally most of everything we do, counties are picking up that difference. And I know it's the right thing to do, but it does put a lot of pressure on this county and every county. And we are doing a lot of good things. And I don't think there's anything that somebody would say we shouldn't be doing. And we're only growing over time with increased capacity. But just wanted to point some of those out. Sorry, I think I went way over two to three minutes. But thank you for the opportunity to just give you a little bit of insight into the pressures facing our county in this area.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you so much. I think it's really helpful to have the context that you're providing as we're looking at the numbers because we need to understand the story behind the numbers. So thank you for taking the time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Yasumoto. So last two slides before we wrap things up. The FIRE department budget has had a lot of interest and questions in the last few years, so we wanted to spend a few moments there. The budget in the recommendation covers $35 million in appropriations. 1.9 million of that is towards salary and benefits, 29 million for services and supplies, just over 3 million in capital outlay for the replacement of equipment, and then 0.8 million in other expenditures. The FIRE services does have a tax revenue stream associated to it, covering 18 million. Licenses and permits, 1.2 million. Intergovernmental, 1.5. Uses of property and money, that's essentially interest on fund balance of 0.4 million. Charges of service, 1.1 million. Other, 0.4. And then the transfer from the general fund of 9.5 million. So you can see there's a gap here of the appropriations of 35 million, but the revenue source is 32.2 million. So that indicates just shy of $3 million use of fund balance in the recommended budget before you, in addition to the 9.5 million contribution from the general fund. So this is a significant pressure on the general fund and an opportunity to look at what revenue models or resources might be available to support FIRE on a long-term basis. Next slide, this touches on just a couple of the highlights we had mentioned here. The dedicated taxes here does have a $1.1 million increase specific to FIRE. The new updated CalFIRE service agreement is $20 million, 20.5. The equipment replacement, 3.3 million. Use of fund balance, we said just shy of 3.3 million. Here it's called out 2.7, 2.8. And then the budget as presented in the recommendation will leave about 6.5 million in fund balance available with this single-year source or single-year budget using about three. So there's roughly two times, just over two times their current proposed use of fund balance that would still be remaining at the end of the fiscal year. And that's the end of our slides. So the upcoming steps would be additional discussion today. We will repeat this presentation again tomorrow at 9:00 AM, and we look forward to input from this board and the public.
All right. Thank you both very much. So at this point, we have already opened the public hearing. We will go ahead and take public comment, and then we will march through in the order of the table of contents, any questions that my colleagues have for staff, and we will also have the opportunity to ask more questions tomorrow, so you can divide up your questions tonight as you see fit. So with that, I'll go ahead and welcome public comment. Good evening.
Good evening, Board of Supervisors, CEO, Al-Sop, and county staff. My name's Alicia Abdo, and I'm here on behalf of On the Move, as well as the Community Leaders Coalition. I want to thank you for your continued commitment to increasing transparency and access to the county's budget process. Hosting this evening hearing for a second year, providing Spanish interpretation, and conducting outreach to promote participation are important steps forward, and we appreciate them. In the spirit of building on this progress, the CLC recommends developing and sharing a publicly accessible year-round budget calendar, much like the one that you did in the presentation earlier. The current budget and brief document is a great start. To make it more useful to residents and stakeholders, we suggest expanding the budget timeline section to include specific decision-making points throughout the year, such as when surplus or deficit projections are made and when major funding allocations are decided. We also encourage the county to continue evolving a budget process that both educates community members about how the budget is built and managed and actively solicits their input. This could include: building deeper, ongoing relationships with community-based organizations to engage in long-term planning and community capacity building; hosting town halls or budget-focused forums outside of board meetings with bilingual materials and interpretation; distributing surveys in English and Spanish to gather input early in the process; using the county's social media and presence at community events to explain the budget process and promote opportunities for engagement throughout the year. Counties like San Diego, San Francisco, Mendocino, and Santa Clara have made meaningful progress on these kinds of initiatives. We recognize that authentic engagement is a long-term investment and may require additional resources. The CLC stands ready to partner with you in that effort, and we look forward to building upon the momentum you've made to implement a more inclusive and participatory process together year after year. Thank you again for your time and commitment.
Thank you, Ms. Abdo.
Good evening. I'm Jenny O'Conne. I'm the Executive Director of the Up Valley Family Centers and also here to represent the Community Leaders Coalition. We thank you for the actions that you've taken to expand public access to the county budget process and for your efforts to be clear and transparent about how the county plans to use its funds. With regards to the budget, it would be helpful to have more clarification on budget policies that outline how the staff and/or board determines which reserve funds are used for deficits and which funds are added to when there are surpluses, whether expected or unexpected or planned. In a time of increasing instability and drastic changes in the funding and policy landscape, the Community Leaders Coalition urges you to prioritize programs that keep our communities healthy, housed, and supported. You took action earlier this year, investing in Napa Valley Together, and we thank you for valuing the work to provide accurate and legal services, information and legal services to local immigrants who are integral to Napa County and who are contributing members of our community. We hope you will continue to support public-private partnerships like that one to address emerging and unmet needs in the social sector going forward. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. O'Conne.
Hi, I am Zoe Taylor, and I'm here on behalf of Community Resources for Children, and we ask that you please continue to prioritize funding childcare projects in Napa County. Working families need access to quality early learning programs, and we would like to thank you for the historic investments you have made, and we hope that they will continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
Good evening to all the members of the board. My name is Oliver Fulland. I am the Managing Attorney of Bay Area Legal Aid's Napa Office, and I thank you for this opportunity to address you all here this evening. Bay Legal is not in the county budget, and I am here to ask that you reconsider that at the earliest opportunity. There are two really compelling reasons to fund legal aid. Number one, legal aid is the single most effective tool for reducing the likelihood of domestic violence, more so than shelters, more so than penalty justice centers. It is the number-one tool, and it does that by providing a realistic, viable alternative to begin an abusive relationship. Number two, investing in legal aid saves the county money. For every dollar invested, according to the Legal Services Corporation, which is a congressional nonprofit, there's an average return of $7 to the community. That is a staggering figure, and we do that through a variety of reasons. Legal aid provides critical services for housing preservation, for access to health and safety nets, including public benefits like CalFresh and CalWorks. We provide domestic violence prevention services and family law by assisting people with temporary restraining orders, other types of protective orders, making sure that they have adequate custody orders to provide safety for their children, and we provide immigration services so people extricating themselves from those abusive relationships can provide legal stability to them and their families. All of these things are absolutely critical, and they provide immeasurable benefits to not just the individuals, but everybody throughout the county by alleviating the other services. Every client that we help at Legal Aid is a client that is likely not going to go to jail, won't need an ambulance for domestic violence services, won't need a bed and a shelter, and won't need to have the police respond on an emergency basis, and that doesn't even touch the rest of the services like the District Attorney's Office and the Public Defender's Office when the lawsuit inevitably results. Our team is small, but we need investment. We are critical, and each member of the community benefits by the presence of legal aid. And so again, there's a $7 return on every $1 spent on our community, and I advocate for increased spending in Bay Area Legal Aid's Napa Office. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Cottrell and the Napa County Board of Supervisors. I'm Cara Verner, Executive Director of the Napa County Bicycle Coalition. We work to make riding a bike safe, convenient, and accessible for riders of all ages and abilities. And in reviewing this year's county budget, we were a bit disheartened to find that our requests submitted in response to last year's budget had not been incorporated this year. So our requests really remain the same. We would like to see a performance measure related to bicycles currently in public works. Those relate to streets resurfaced and potholes filled. We would love to see miles of bike lanes installed or upgraded. We also ask that the budget denote when and, to some extent, what bike and pedestrian facilities are planned, in the same way that we can easily determine where guardrails will be installed. We can't just look at the bike plan for this because the bike plan is a recommendation and often is, for various reasons, not implemented as such. We have a new request concerning the road safety goal on page 272. It reads, designation of several roads as Class II or Class III bike roadways participate in the preparation of the Napa Valley Active Transportation Plan. But roads are already designated this way under the current plan, and so this struck us as fairly passive and lacking in commitment, especially when we looked at other things like guardrails where the verbs are "design" and "construct." We'd love to see this goal upgraded to something like implement bike lanes and bike safety upgrades per the Active Transportation Plan, which we are hoping to update. We continue to request that the county prioritize bike safety improvements on Silver Auto Trail. Through our ongoing partnership with public works, we've identified buffers with rumble strips as a feasible low-cost solution that has a notably high safety payoff for both bicyclists and drivers. And even though the county's own strategic plan says to, quote, "implement bike facilities improvements on Silver Auto Trail," specifically, we did not see this item in the budget. We're again asking for dedicated and funding for improvements on Silver Auto Trail that are not tied to the pavement condition index, not necessarily anyway. All of this being said, we know that there are some items in this budget that will include bike facilities and certainly currently are. We're very grateful for the first buffers and rumble strips that are going in on Silver Auto Trail this summer, but we don't want to have to guess at which items do include them. And when upgrades aren't identified in the budget, we fear that they will be an afterthought, implemented only when the budget happens to allow for them, rather than being planned and budgeted for from their inception. We know there's a lot of great intention and support for this, and we really appreciate it. We ask that the budget does reflect this better and makes it more transparent where bike facilities are being funded. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Verner.
Hello, Chris Malin. Yes, so I'd like to speak on Fund 2720, which addresses the Groundwater Sustainability Agency budget. One thing in general about how the information goes out to the public about the budget and following all the different funds, I didn't see how to get into the specifics of a fund, and I am wondering if you can add that, probably not this year, but maybe next year, so that we can, if we're interested in a certain fund, to see what the line items are so we can understand how the money's being used and to see if it's, you know, so that we can have a robust discussion about how the money's being used. In particular, with the Groundwater Sustainable Agency, I saw that there is a line item under Budget Fund 2720 that's described as Groundwater Sustainability Ag. AG. I don't know if that stands for ag as in agriculture. I don't know. But in 2023, '24, it was 1.3 million. In 2024, '25, it was 1.4, and in '25, '26, it's going to be 614. So in other words, I'm seeing this as an example because I'd like to know what that means. What is that money being used for, especially if it's being used for ag, since 80% to 90% of the groundwater in Napa County is being pumped for vineyards? And Napa County's groundwater basin is being overpumped by an average of 3,000 acre-feet per year beyond sustainability. So I know that you have a fee structure before you that you are looking into implementing, short of regulating, and having meters and, you know, having regulations and fines and that kind of thing. You want to do fees for everybody in the county and incorporated area, including residents, which the Groundwater Sustainable Management Act does not allow you to do fees for residents. So I'm trying to follow that to see if that revenue is being put into the budget this year, as if it's going to be passed, that you'll have revenue coming from groundwater pumping. I think that would be interesting to follow. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Malin. Any other public comment in the room? Okay. I guess I'll just turn back to staff for a moment to find out if there's any other comments that you want to make after hearing the public comment.
I would like to address Ms. Malin's initial question of if ag is addressing agriculture, and unfortunately, it is just a truncation of the letters of agency, ran out of space. So it's Groundwater Sustainability Agency, although it says "ag" there. So that is, nothing here in particular is for ag, it is for the agency in total. The agency's budget itself will be presented tomorrow afternoon as a special district, and additional questions can be discussed there also.
Great. Thank you for that clarification and that reminder that we'll take up the special districts tomorrow afternoon. So well, thank you, everyone who offered public comment this evening. At this point, I will go ahead and turn to my colleagues, and we can begin to go through the budget book. And again, I would like to do this in order of the table of contents, so I will find out if there are, I'll keep the lights handy-bye, if folks have comments on the CEO letter or Board of Supervisors general info or policy guidelines, or also we have the financial summary, so sort of those introductory documents. Supervisor Ramos, it looks like you're attempting to turn on your light and nothing is showing up here, so I'm not sure they're working.
I know there's a reset.
Okay. So Supervisor Ramos, go ahead. This tells me I'm not first in line, but... Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much, and thank you to staff, to the budget staff, the analysts who prepared this, and to our department heads. I absolutely recognize and acknowledge how much work goes into this, and I think what's important is that this is the book that guides us throughout the year, and so it's definitely worthy of the amount of time that goes into it. I'm going to start off with my first question. It's on page 20, and this is on appropriations of enterprise funds, and it's particular to the Calistoga Fairgrounds. I did pose this question to Assistant CEO Craig about, there were... I did pose this question to Assistant CEO Craig about, there were expenditures in '24-25. We are closing this fund, and there is a slight amount of revenue that needs to be recognized. And in fact, the revenue for my colleagues, I'm on page 20, and the revenue and detailed portions of the Calistoga Fairgrounds Enterprise Fund appear on page 492. And on 492, it has the actual appropriations of 565, and then it does, in fact, have the revenues listed as well. And in the narrative, it says that there is, that it is going to be closed, but it just would seem appropriate, we've dealt with this before when we've had various declared emergency line items themselves that we were closing, and so I've just asked, how are we going to handle this to acknowledge the actual expenditures that happened in '24-25 on this page?
The budget was amended during the year, so it has reflected the activity that has transpired up to the close and that gave the authority to the auditor controller to make any transactions necessary to close the fund. So those actions have already occurred earlier this year, but they were after the adoption of the budget.
The original...
At mid-year.
The budget originally adopted was zero for expenditures.
Okay. On the '24-25 budget, so we're not reflecting the actuals of the mid-year, so in terms of the recommended '25-26, we do have a small nominal amount recognized as revenue for interest. Are we not acknowledging that in here?
We have estimated actual revenue of this year of 9,000, and then with the expectation of the 500,000 to be closed at the end of the fiscal year, so no budget next fiscal year.
And then, in budget books on the following years, the historic actuals will persist. So you will see '24-25 actuals on here for one to two years until they essentially fall out of the visible...
Where will we put that revenue, given that that item is now closed by mid-year?
General fund.
Okay. And so when...
It's in the estimated revenues for the general fund for this fiscal year.
Okay. I think it would be helpful to, you know, given that it was there, and we've dealt with this before as we're changing things out, to allow that narrative below to explain that. My next question, it comes from page 22, and it also relates to pages 309 and 314, and this is the building division and code enforcement. And so this narrative here talks about a transfer in and out because their code enforcement, building staff was paying for code enforcement staff, those employees are being moved to their own division, and that's fine, I have no issue with that. However, when I look at pages 309 and 314 in particular, that narrative does not appear there, and the item on page 309 for building appears as special items, 1.12 million. The narrative says the special item increased to reflect the continued operational support as an inter-fund transfer. And then we get to code enforcement, and it's, again, a special item. Can you please explain why we're doing it like this in the budget?
This is for accounting purposes. The department in working with management has determined that it is better to represent the staff in the division in which they are operating, which is code enforcement, instead of building. However, building is where the revenue source is, so in order for code enforcement to be made whole, there is a transfer out from building to equal those costs and a transfer in to code enforcement. Net zero.
Okay. I think it would be helpful to include somewhere in there that it is, in fact, net zero because it looks like an expense to one and a revenue source, a special funds revenue source to the other, but it is a net zero. So my next questions and comments are really focused on general fund and beginning balance and ending balance, so I'm going to be on page 23 mostly. So in understanding, we had, we begin the year, we look at how much is left in the bank account that is uncommitted, and we work off of that. And these are the funds that we get to use for unanticipated expenses and mid-year budget adjustments, right?
For all things of the board's priorities, yes.
So we started the '24-25 with 56 million start, and we are beginning with 56, just about the same, a little bit, you know, change, change, 56 million. But in this narrative, if I understand this correctly, we are going to be ending the '25-26 fiscal year with 10.4 million?
There will be 10.4 million in available fund balance, estimated based on all of the estimates that go into the beginning, the revenues and the expenses. There is also another 10 million in fiscal uncertainty, which has only a designation, and it is utilized in the same manner as available fund balance, so it's 20.4 million in available funds for the board's discretion through the year.
So 20.4 million is really different from 56 million. And when I look at our all-funds expenses, we have a delta from '24-25 to '25-26 of 43.9 million in expenditures. And I just want to share that for my colleagues. We are spending more than we have in this budget. And I am concerned because, two years in a row, we've started with 56 million on the beginning fund balance, and we've always, in my time, had a good amount. These were far healthier amounts at the 56 million amount. And I think what bears sharing here is that the difference, when you look back, we used to hover at about the 20s and the 30s on beginning fund balance. But starting in '24-25, we recognize excess ERAF, our return of excess property taxes. We recognize excess ERAF as general fund dollars. And so if we were to take just the ballpark of our 56 million of fund balance and we take away our ERAF, that's $30 million difference, and we're only ending with 10. So our spending has increased here. And I just, I want to share that because when I look at our spending, the difference between the two years of '24-25 to '25-26 in all funds is 43.9 million in spending, yet in general, in general fund revenue sources, our increase is only 15.2 million. And that is a deficit budget. We are using our funding sources, yes, that we have, but we are not living within the funding sources that we are receiving in '25-26. So I just, I want to point that one out. And what's concerning to me is if you turn to page 40, and that is our budget policies, our budget policy, Guiding Principle 5, within our budget policy on page 40 says, "The county's goal is that, on average, actual annual general fund operating expenditures will not exceed operating revenue." Yet for two years in a row, our operating expenditures have, in fact, exceeded our operational revenue. And we haven't hit scary financial times yet. And so if I were to look at the trend, if we are looking at how we are spending our deficit spending, our deficit spending in '24-25 was 32.5 million expenditures over revenue. And for '25-26, looking at Schedule 1 for my colleagues, that's on page 547, if you look at Schedule 1, our deficit spending for '25-26 is proposed at 34.7 million. That is incredibly concerning, because that's two years in a row. If we keep on increasing our deficit spending at this rate, I appreciate the work that's gone into increasing our reserves and in placing $10 million into fiscal uncertainty, but having that 10 million of fiscal uncertainty doesn't really hold the same value if we are not holding ourselves to living within our means. And so I would, I guess I'm, on this one, I'm just more concerned. How did we get to increasing our deficit spending and not adhering to Budget Policy 5 that asks us to have revenue meet expenditures?
So for multiple years, the county has actively adopted a general fund budget where the expenditures exceed the current year revenue estimates and are utilizing the rollover funds that are available from prior years. As you mentioned, last year, it was projected to draw down $30 million. We are, in effect, not going to draw down $30 million. That was what was in the finance plan. However, the year activity as it plays out is much different than that, and that is what we're then reflecting, the ability to then start with estimated fund balance this year. Also, for operating revenues and operating expenses, that does not include transfers. So the transfers that are programmed in here is $70 million. Those are not operations. So once you take $70 million out of the expenditures, our operating expenditures are less than the operating revenues.
But yet, we're still going to be dipping into fund balances here.
We have a financing plan that asks you to authorize appropriations that could up to $30 million, but this is a conservative budget, as is every year's budget, and we have not ever fully spent appropriations and drawn down at the level that is approved.
So in looking at the fund, we have, how many bargaining units do we have coming at us this year? We have the DSA in October.
One, yes.
And when is probation up?
Not for a couple more years. They're a four-year agreement.
Are they on the same cycle as general SEIU?
I don't know if the timing's exact, but it'll be close.
Okay. Okay. Those are my questions right now in this section. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Ramos. Supervisor Gallagher.
Thank you. Thank you, staff, for the presentation. So we're starting at the beginning with the CEO letter, and I think that gives us an opportunity to talk a little bit about priorities, which I think is important to do in our public setting. So as you all know, the budget is not just a compilation of spreadsheets assigning funds to the various county departments, but a statement of our values and our priorities. And I'm not going to report, repeat the priorities that our CEO delineated very well in his opening remarks before the presentation, so you do know what those are. I think I do want to make a statement, though, that our community right now, as well as our state and our country, are in crisis. Over the weekend, we learned that the privacy rights of our residents are being illegally compromised by the federal government. Community members put their trust in the county and our partners when they seek services. They provide personal and confidential information that we, the government, pledge will not be used in any way that may harm them or their families. When the federal government reneges on that promise, it reflects poorly on local government and erodes trust with community members. So these are not normal times, and we must do everything in our power to support and defend our immigrant community and our other vulnerable populations. They are family, they are friends, they are neighbors, and they are our workforce. And toward that end, I want to first say that this board made a commitment to protecting our vulnerable populations back in December of 2024, and Supervisor Ramos and I, as the ad hoc committee on inclusion, will continue to look for ways to enhance the county efforts. So we understand what is at stake, and we value the work of our county departments and our community partners. And through this budget, I want to assure that we are able to continue to grow and enhance the safety net services in conjunction with our community partners at a time when cuts to the safety net are happening at an unprecedented rate and will continue into the foreseeable future. So I'm going to go just to the beginning of the budget book now. I do have the same concern as Supervisor Ramos. I won't detail it as well as her, but the PBEs narrative that says that the PBEs budget is increasing by 1.4 million, I understand that's about accounting, however, it doesn't give the right impression that budget is really not increasing. It's a budget restructure, which is very different than an increasing budget. I wanted to see if you'd go back to your slides, Mr. Buzzelich, for a moment. Can you cue those up? And this is about the general fund, you have the general fund pie chart. Not the revenue, but, yes, thank you very much. So I am curious as to why, you mentioned for presentation purposes, you were lumping HHSA and housing and community services together. They, as you stated, they're two different departments. I think this is unusual that they are put together in the pie chart, and so I would like to know what those different percentages are, if you can get that today or tomorrow, because those are not the same department, and I don't really understand why they would be put together on the pie chart. Also, you have another slide that says pressures, pressures on the general fund.
Slide nine.
Thank you. Yes. All right. This table, no, maybe that's not it.
Next, additional slide.
Yes. Can you go to the next one? Yes, that's the one, I'm sorry. Continuation of the pressures on the general fund. So the HHSA at 33 million, I think it's interesting to sort of call out our largest department as pressures on the general fund. And I kind of do take issue with some of the verbiage around this idea of pressures. Yes, they are pressures on the general fund. However, the general fund is there to provide really, really important core government services to our community. The lion's share goes to public safety, as we all know, although we don't tend to lump public safety altogether. We do lump all of the different, the nine different divisions of HHSA, however, into one department. And so I think it's really important to understand the context and understand, you know, the different sizes of the departments. It's not really apples to apples, so I think that that's important. And I think I will stop there because my other comments are further along. Thanks.
Speaking to your request for breaking down HHSA and housing, the housing, if it was on its own, would be 2%, and therefore, it would then get lumped into the miscellaneous and other, and that's why it was brought down to put with HHSA, similar to GSA, was partnered with PBS, so that way you could see those functional areas. But we can appreciate breaking it up. HHSA on its own would be 14%.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallagher.
Thank you Supervisor Gallagher, and thank you for your introductory statement. I had an observation and a question first on page 21. It's basically the takeaway there, it talks about employee benefits. Just a reminder that our people are our most important asset, and every new hire comes with an increasingly high long-term cost. So just something to be aware of. And I would just voice a note of appreciation that we have been quite disciplined in this budget about not adding new hires. I'm sure every department has a place where they could, could use someone else, and understanding in this moment, that's just not something that we can do in this budget. And then my question is on page 27. Services and supplies are projected to increase by 15.8 million, a 23.6% increase, which is driven by internal service fund costs. And then that's specifically for information technology services, property management, and liability insurance. And it, the call out that liability insurance in particular has increased across the state due to market forces. And I'm just wondering if you can break down that percentage for us so that we have a sense of what that percentage increase in liability is? And if not today, then maybe tomorrow.
We will provide that tomorrow.
Great. Thank you.
Chair, if I may.
Go ahead. Supervisor Ramos.
Thank you. A follow-up to slides nine and 10 from Supervisor Gallagher. I think that point of that is what the general fund is for is very well taken. I think it would be really helpful if we could tomorrow include the delta, not just the total expenditure that is coming from it, but the delta over last year. You know, I, I go back to the fact that we're spending all funds in $43 million more. We need to isolate where those extra costs are. And while I understand that they rise up because of their total expenditure, if the delta is not that significant, that's actually not what we should be looking at and being able to really assess what those liabilities are to the county. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Ramos. Supervisor Alessio.
I want to thank my colleagues. It's great to be a part of this, this budget process, and it's, it's very in-depth and complex. So I'm listening and I'm learning as we go. So thank you for all your comments. Back to just kind of reviewing the priorities, and I appreciate the CEO's letter, I thought you did very, that's very well done. I also want to bring us back to our community health needs assessment priorities, our CHA and our CHIP. And just so we are calling these out loud, as these are identified, community health, public health needs, that was done in a very comprehensive survey and public health process. Those are housing affordability, and you can put the word access to pretty much all of these. Housing affordability, behavioral health, which we're seeing robust even though unfunded amounts for that occurring, access to health services, racial equity, LGBT inclusion, which was addressed, and access to economic stability. In terms of, which is going to be challenging, I think, with the unknown path that I think we're all sensing or feeling just based on what we've seen this, this first, almost six months of the year. The community priorities are similar but not identical. This is kind of comes from a temperature test that the city of Napa does, conducts, which is the largest portion of a populace within our county. What's similar is housing affordability, economic stability for residents. They want to be able to afford just basic everything, everyday needs. The safe and equity of our roads and streets, including bike lanes, mobility, multimobility, fire prevention, which is very much part of this plan, and behavioral health, once again, that is there. So we have some overlaps, but not everything is there. And I just think it's really important that we recognize the work that's been done in terms of the CHA, the CHIP, the community health assessment, and the community health implementation plan. And then also just overall community priorities, what they say that they want through other studies. And that, and looking at the budget, I just think my overall concern, one, I think the budget's very well done. I'm a little bit, I'm a little bit confused about the revenue, the expense over revenues, because I, my understanding is that the fund balance of 56 million comes from our previous year. So if we have 56 million coming from the previous year, which would, I used to call that a surplus from the fiscal year, which is coming from city council, and if city council is a pretty nice surplus or fund balance, I don't see how that is expense over revenue. So I guess I'm a little confused on that. That would, it does seem that we are, that we do have conservative budgets to get us to that place, and maybe a little luck too, over the, over the last couple of years. That said, as I look at the, the economic development dashboard that the city of Napa has, and the economic forecast that Dr. Eiler presented, my concerns are, is what they, they point out, that the hotel average rate is down by 55.7% over the last six months, though occupancy is up by 8%, but because of all the deals that they're doing and the rate's gone down so much. That median home prices are down by 0.9% over from a year to year, with a forecast of additional 3.3% going down in terms of median home price, which is going to impact our property tax. So we have TOT tax, we have property tax. The unemployment rate has increased 3.7% anticipated that will continue to increase through 2026, 4.25%. We know that we are, well, let me just, the one other tax forecast, or actually it's stat, it's data, is that Napa County, this is actually in the city's economic dashboard, Napa County taxable sales fell by 0.3% year-on-year, over the last 12 months, April to April, compared to 1.7% the year from '23 to '24. And this is greater than California's slippage, which was 2.3%. So I'm looking at all our, our revenues in terms of tax revenues, not everything else we receive or that comes through us. And I'm just, I want to make sure that we, that we really are being very cautious here. And if you've ever watched me talk about the city budget, I'm super positive. I'm like, oh, no, it's going to be fine. This is the first year on a dais that I've, I've thought, you know what, we really need to be careful. If we're looking at last year's data, economic data, and the forecast, and what we know is clearly uncertain with the state budget being 12 billion in deficit, and that's with them cutting, you know, Medicaid, Medi-Cal, and other programs that are really essential safety net programs, social programs for our community, and what's happening in the federal funding in terms of it being conditional, people having to, you know, scrub their policies, whatever, or sign these, you know, notices of, of, you know, we're going to do everything the federal government says we're going to do, they're, they want us to do. I'm just really concerned. I, I, we've never seen this in history. This is, we're at a point and time in history, and I'm not trying to like, be dramatic. I'm looking at the facts, and they're hard to look at. These economic facts are worrisome. The greater facts of the state and federal funding is, concerns me far greater because we have no control over that. And that is so much of what comes for, comes through to the county. And I want to make sure that we're prepared. Now, I do see that we have reserves. We have very robust reserves, which are fantastic. I'm not saying we need to change what we have here. I just want us to be very aware and very cautious. So the good news is, I've seen this, the fund balance starting at 56 million over the last couple of years, and we have a very robust reserve. But that doesn't mean that I'm not a little uncomfortable and a little nervous moving forward. I do also trust that this, this board and our leadership can pivot, and we're really smart. And if we need to, we'll come back and we'll pivot as needed. But that's just in the overall, kind of the holistic view. And looking at our CEO's letter, which again, I thought was very, very good, but I wanted to include these items. In terms of any specific details, I don't have any specific details on this first part of the budget. Just think my colleagues were bringing up what they did.
Great. Thank you. Supervisor Manfree.
Thank you, Chair Cottrell. And thanks, everyone on the board, for your comments. I'm not in disagreement with anything so far, so I'm, I'm not going to repeat the questions, but I just want to say this is a great conversation. I think the first comment here, I'm just going to go through the, the CEO letter especially in order, is that I'm noticing that for our estimates of taxable assessed value, estimates of gross domestic product, we're not adjusting for inflation at all. And I realize that might not be normal to do, but when you do that, these numbers are essentially flat. And so things that look like increases really aren't. We're just continuing to cover costs at the same rate, and I'm just going to say that, you know, out loud for everyone's general benefit, that it's, it's not, it's not like some kind of, it's not as strong a growth as it might look like once you adjust for inflation, which has been a, a significant change in the last few years. And I only calculated it for national level inflation. It may be different just for the state of California or locally, because we have, you know, specific costs associated with our market that might be higher than average or higher than someplace in Ohio, for example. So, so just thinking about the numbers critically, that's, that's something to pay attention to, and to not be overly optimistic when it looks like the trend is going up. I want to second Bellio's request for including percent change in the tables for year-over-year differences, because different things pop out when you include the percent change that are easier to see that way. So for example, on page 21, fleet management is increasing by close to 20%. You know, and for me, that's, the question is, why? That's a pretty significant increase, but you wouldn't necessarily notice that without calculating the percent out. Similarly, equipment replacement, in parentheses, roads, is decreasing by almost 40%. And it's like, well, that's great. We've cut costs somehow. Is that because last year was higher, or is that because we made some changes? You know, that sort of thing. And these are also questions, and I guess I'll pause after this, in case there's any comment that can be responded with right now. And the other one here is liability insurance, which Chair Cottrell mentioned, increasing by just over 25%. So yeah, so if, if there's any feedback on fleet management, equipment replacement, or liability insurance, I'm happy to hear it.
I will take them in a varying order. The vehicle replacement and equipment replacement are absolutely because one year there is less activity and one year there's more activity, is based on the actual schedule of vehicles or equipment that is being recommended for replacement. The fleet management operations, that is dependent largely on support from the internal service funds. So it's allocation costs from property insurance, IT, will increase its cost. And it's such a small department that you see those changes there. Liability insurance, this is back to a statewide issue. We are part of a risk pool called PRISM, very long acronym that I should be able to tell you, but it's risk. For, it's the largest risk pool in the state of California. And it is going out and buying the reinsurance for us with the Lloyds of London's and the AIGs. And it continues to see significant hard markets. But at the end of the day, we are fortunate that we are able to still get insurance. There are a lot of agencies who struggle and have to pay extremely double, triple rates because of this issue. A part of our rates are also related to claims, but the majority of our rates are related to the reinsurance policies themselves, and that is what is driving these costs.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
And then on the next page, I'm noticing a big increase in the Wildlife Conservation Commission, an increase of 50% over the previous year.
Yep. That was long-term held flat. And with the requests earlier this year, we went in and made the determination it was time to increase it and basically make up for some lost time.
Okay. Thank you. And then just below that, also on page 22, public TV and, public television education in government is going from 100,000 a year to zero? Oh, no, wait. Oh, it's just not changing. My, my bad. Same for UDVS franchise fees, so I guess those are just stable. Okay. And then below that, there's a little bit of a discussion of BRIC, and I just was hoping that we could get a little bit more information out about what's changing with the BRIC grant, since that's an item of general public interest. So anyone who's here who's, who would like to respond to that, so welcome to.
Yeah. Madam Chairwoman, members of the board, the BRIC grant is over and ended. The FEMA, earlier this year, a few months ago, sent out a memo saying that they were canceling the BRIC program for a variety of reasons that they described in their, their communication. It was a little rough and murky. When it first happened, we heard about it in the news and had to go through this process of trying to figure out what was rumor and what was real. But at the end of the day, we were, received official confirmation from FEMA that they were doing away with the program. The good news is, is we didn't get very far down the road in the program. And I'm thankful for that, frankly, given the unpredictability of FEMA reimbursements anytime, but particularly right now. And, and so we got it early on. We were far down the road in terms of work, but in terms of actually spending county money on projects, we were not. So thankfully, we were thankful for that. So we have pivoted. We have, we have gone in a different direction. This budget provides several million, 3, 3.5 million for wildfire mitigation work in the county that Napa County Firewise, Napa Communities Firewise Foundation is doing for us. So we've turned the corner. We're pursuing a different program. And I think that's, at the end of the day, I'm, I'm actually deliberating.
Okay. Thank you. Very, very helpful. And I've just got a couple more things specific to the budget. The available fund balance is listed on pages, on page 23, on page 29 twice, and page 52. And all of the numbers are different. And so just in case anyone in the public caught that, I was hoping for clarification on why something with the same name might appear with four different quantities.
Of course. The amount on page 29 listing the available fund balance is the estimated beginning available fund balance of the 56 million, which is also the number that we're starting with on the top of page 23. So that is similar information. And then when you could take total financing sources on page 23 of 362.8 million, and you subtract the 341.3 million in financing uses, expenses, that gets you the 21.45 million that's on page 52. Those are all calculations of all the data that's going on in all of the general fund departments. But then, once you have the 21.4 million, and you then have the adjustments of the 11 million just below there of the additions to the general reserve to meet the budget policy, the addition to the fiscal uncertainty, and the release of tobacco settlement funds, you then get to a net of 10.4 million of available, estimated available fund balance at the end of the fiscal year.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's a very helpful clarification. And then last thing, very specific, is that, this is way at the end of the glossary, there's some tables that are just too small to read. And I mean, I think with a magnifying glass, there's enough detail in the printing that you could get to it, but they're tiny. So that's just like kind of an editing, editorial.
Correct. Yes. We definitely want to spend more time on that this summer. That is from the CIP document that was adopted this year, and we want it to be presented properly when we get to the final adopt.
Okay. That's great. And this is an absolutely enormous document. I can't imagine the flurry of activity that was going on in the last few weeks pulling this together. So I'm incredibly grateful for all the staff who grateful for all the staff who've worked on it, for the level of detail. And I think overall, it's a pretty tight budget. There's not really a lot to, you know, like if, you know, if we're, it would, it will be hard to trim, right? And so there's two things we can do. We can find things to cut back, or we can try to find ways to increase revenue. And so that's something for future conversation. But I do feel like the services the county is providing are incredibly helpful for residents, and that we're generally doing a good job of meeting the expectations and needs that people who live here and people who visit here have. So, yeah, so thanks for future conversations. And in response to Supervisor Alessio's comment about hotels, I wanted to just kind of, for the sake of conversation, say that the city of Napa has a number of hotels in planning. And we also are hearing that occupancy rates are not, you know, not, how to say, there's not, there's typically empty rooms already. And so is the city is adding more of this, you know, just logically with economics, could compete with the county's income on TOT? And that's something for us to think about critically and plan for. And again, another reason to have conversations about how to sustain our revenue sources or improve them. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Manfree. That was a great wrap-up of a bunch of thoughts, too. So at this point, I'm cognizant of the time. We sort of assessed around a two-hour window for this, and we have just gotten through the beginning stages, which I think, I actually think it's really important that, to spend time with the overarching, the letter and the overarching policy. So I appreciate everyone taking some time to make comments there. So I would like to suggest that we go for another 30 or 40 minutes. Does that work for, oh, that was almost side-eye. So why don't we do this? But I do want to make sure that we make it through all of the items in this first round. We can keep the questions limited or comments limited. So let's go in chunks of maybe sort of 100 pages. And so I will ask now if anyone has comments or questions that they'd like to offer to staff on the general fund through Fund 1,000. I'm still on the first page of the table of contents. So through county council, up to page 102, does anyone want to raise a question? Getting no's. Okay. Okay. Then I will go ahead. Why don't we just take the whole, well, we'll finish off with other comments on the general fund.
Oh, wait, wait, wait.
Supervisor Gallagher. Go ahead. No rest.
I'm just trying to make sure I stay within the limits here. So I do have something on Public Works. Can I, now be the time?
This is the perfect time.
Okay, and very quick.
Yeah.
Quickly, I know.
So I will go Supervisor Gallagher and Supervisor Ramos.
Okay. So just for, I don't, it's not a particular page necessarily. So Mr. Buzzelich, you spoke at the beginning of your presentation, you talked a little bit about the CIP plan and the future projects that are now put into the budget, as were previously in our history have not been. They've sort of come along as the projects have come along. And I understand that. But I think it's just important to note that that is different than what we have done in the past. So I imagine many of the construction projects are still really rough estimates, and as detailed project information is probably not yet available for many of these projects. I think it's just important for the public and for our board to understand that we may have several budget adjustments as those projects come online and we do get better estimates. I think it's important to just note that, that it's not the Public Works Department just kind of coming back time and time again and saying, hey, we need this, we need that. But they actually will have to adjust the budget because they have put these estimates in, but they are indeed likely rough estimates. So that's just something that's going to continue to occur. I did see, and I was just trying to figure out exactly where this belonged, the Gordon Valley Road paving project is listed as a CIP fund project on page 431, and it is listed as an ongoing project and listed as a new project in the road CIP on page 280. So I do see that it only shows up on Schedule G once, which is good, because it's one project. But I am trying to figure out, for example, you know, where is that supposed to be? Where does it actually land? I'm guessing not in all three places. And I don't know if anybody's here from Public Works. But we can do it tomorrow, too. So there's a question for tomorrow. And, oh, and I do like the suggestion from Cara at the Bike Coalition. I really, really think it is important that we have performance measures regarding the improvements and enhancements to bike lanes, bike safety, bike facilities, et cetera. I do think it's important to call those out. So that was something we can discuss with Public Works, but I think in the goals and performance measures, that is really important to capture. So I would like to see us do that for the final. And it looks like Mr. Letterer is actually, he kind of, how'd you sneak in or something? You've been here the whole time.
I've been here the whole time.
Yeah. I thought so. Thank you so much.
Sure. Good evening. Steve Letterer, Public Works Director. Regarding Gordon Valley, I'm not honestly sure where it is in the book. I can tell you that it is going out to bid in July and will be constructed in August and September. So that's where it is physically.
Okay.
And we'll figure out where it is in the book.
Okay, thank you. I know that you're not responsible for that part, so. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallagher. Supervisor Ramos.
Thank you. Because Capital Projects lives way over in 3,000, I'm going to save that part. You know, I would just, I would just say to Director Letter, you know, when we look at projects moving forward with the increased need for stormwater improvements and extra, extra demands on projects to do more, I think we really need to start looking at opportunities for us to be able to tap into climate bond dollars, to be able to carry out some of these infrastructure projects, whether it's through stormwater or regional shoreline adaptation. The climate dollars are going to be incredibly useful for us from an infrastructure perspective. And so maybe that's just a bookmark for next year when we talk about capital projects and how we need to start looking at these enhancements of whether it's roadway improvements for bicycle safety. And shout out to Cara, I yelled at you. That was me, giving you a high five for cleaning up I Mola with your handy electric bike contraption. So thank you for that. Moving along, I, am I still allowed to go in through general fund? My next one is.
Go for it.
Okay, my, my next one is going to, is going to be for, for the Public Defender. I think, Chris, I see you here in the back. So last year, we made an adjustment that allowed the increase of one Public Defender for purposes of Care Court. And we heard earlier today, I think for Director Yasamoto, was seven people have entered Care Court. Is that the correct number? And so I would just like to understand from, from a staffing perspective in the Public Defender's office, we have those allocated positions. Do we use all that time? Not at all suggesting that you don't, because I'm sure you have plenty of work to do. But if you could just kind of give us, where does that live? And where do we, do we anticipate any greater needs going forward in this fiscal year on Care Court?
Chris Keely, Public Defender. No, I wouldn't anticipate more staffing needs for Care Court. Last year, we added a paralegal, not a attorney.
Thank you for that clarification.
The year before, we did add another attorney, and that was to cover the misdemeanor arraignments after the grand jury.
Okay.
And so I can tell you, I have personally been handling Care Court. I took on the duty myself rather than assigning it to anyone, because it was an additional mandate, and we are really busy. So I'm doing it right now. I will continue doing it as long as I can.
Thank you. That was the, I'm Public Defender.
And we did actually have 10 petitions, but only seven are currently in right now. Two are pending, and one needed a higher level of services.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for that update. My next question is to the sheriff.
And on the sheriff's budget, we're on page, I'm looking at page 142. And so I guess I'll start off with Ms. Craig. You know, when we look at salary and employee benefits on the sheriff's division, it's a 7% change. Given what you've said in terms of the increases to employee benefits, where, what's that 7% attributed to?
So part of the sheriff's budget, I believe, is the increase of two FTE. There's the only two additional FTE to be funded in the general fund. And then, in addition, this would be an increase overtime and contracted salaries and benefits.
The FT are two custodians, which don't, which don't get us to the, the $2 million for sure.
Correct.
But I'm just wondering, in terms of, we've got the DSA coming at us in October, is that at all in this budget?
In here is the current contract increase, which is 3%, and that is projected through the year. So anything above and beyond the DSA's current agreement rate would be above and beyond this budget.
So that ends in October?
But it is projected through June 30. We had to budget something, so we couldn't decrease their salaries. So we increased that continuing through just June 30. But there is no projected additional increase at October 31. Correct.
Okay. I'm not understanding this. So is there, so is there a salary increase for DSA represented in that 7%?
Yes. On July 1, they will go up 3%. And that is in that number.
That's already negotiated?
Correct.
So come October 1?
There is nothing additional beyond the current agreement.
Okay. So then I go back to the fact that we're only going to have a general fund balance at end of year at $10.4 million. Last time, I mean, if I'm just understanding where we were at when we received our vacancy ratings of, from the sheriff as part of our AB, what's-ama-ho's-it hearing, I'm, where are we going to get that money to pay for an October?
So none of our other contracts adjust during the year. So at this time, we do not anticipate any further adjustments during the fiscal year.
But they negotiate in October?
Correct.
So when would this?
It could take effect as a pay change July 1. It's up to the board on how to negotiate them. All of our other agreements don't adjust until July 1.
But have we done that in the past with the DSA? Because SEIU, we negotiated and it's due in June, so that's why it's only like a three-week delay. So we are in a very different territory with it being a bargaining unit that's coming to the table in October.
It is, the last agreement, we did make a change on October, but in some prior agreements, we did not. So that is the discretion of the board.
So what fund is available to us if what ends up being negotiated?
Available fund balance, $20.4 million.
So it's 10.4 with the fiscal uncertainty?
Correct.
Okay. And the, the changes we have made regarding employee contribution to PERS, we made an amendment, it applies to everyone from SEIU, that was already, that was already amended, changed, and is already reflected in this budget for DSA?
DSA, there is no change. They, theirs is in here for what the calculations are, but knowing what's coming next week to the board, the cost sharing change will not affect that bargaining group. It affects the other two groups.
Okay, thank you. My next question is regarding hiring incentives. We received a report earlier, I don't, sometime, regarding our vacancies. The sheriff told us that overtime costs are going to be significant, given the number of vacancies. And at one point, I think sheriff, correct me if I'm wrong, but you said the day that you were before us, you said you had two deputies running the county on the unincorporated. So when we look at the, at what we need to do to ensure that we can stay competitive in hiring, where do those hiring incentives live in the budget? Because I know we have some already, but I'd like to know where they live, where we're at in terms of those contributions. And then I guess the better question for the sheriff is, do we need more of those hiring incentives?
So when the hiring incentives are paid, they are compensation, so they're paid out of salaries and benefits. I cannot tell you at this point how much has been paid this year, but we can get that information for you, and that they are still built in to continue. And the board adopted a increase in that policy this year. So it is to assist HR and the sheriff with their recruitment.
Okay. I would like that information, please. And then my final question on the sheriff budget is, you recently, you didn't tell me, your social media did, that you retired some dogs. We have an incredibly successful canine program that we have operated here in the county of Napa. I'd like to hear from you. How many dogs have you retired? How many do you plan to bring onboard? What does this budget reflect? And so let you answer that, and then I'll ask you more.
Yeah, thank you Supervisor Ramos. So what we anticipate to be able to do with the submitted budget before you for '25, '26, is to replace two dogs. We have two dogs that retired in the fiscal year that we're currently in. And so we submitted a budget believing that we'll be able to replace those two dogs. Now, recently, like in the last 10 days, we learned of a deputy that's leaving the organization. It's also a canine team. That's the third dog. We don't know if we're able to afford to replace that dog in the coming fiscal year. So that one is kind of more, you know, we'll see where we're at at mid-year, see if we can afford to replace that third dog. But we do believe we can replace two of the dogs that retired recently.
So back in the day, and I'm saying way back in the day, a dog was 25. What's a dog run these days?
That's, that's pretty fair. That's about what they run. And we do have two, we do have two contractual dogs with the City of American Canyon. And we do have revenue, we factor in revenue in our contract with police services with that city to help offset some of the costs for those two contractual dogs.
And where in the budget does, does the cost of a dog live?
In operating.
And what is the life of a dog that we get out of them? Useful operational time?
On the high end, like an old dog that still wants to work, we can get up to six or seven years. But usually, we're in a ballpark of four or five years.
And so I guess, my suggestion here, I would say, I mean, this is a program that we have committed to, one that's successful and one that takes a lot of investment. I certainly would love to be able to see, and maybe this is for you sheriff to talk to the auditor controller, if we can look at this as more of, it would be like a diminishing capital asset where we're putting money away for, just like apparatus, just like fire apparatus, we're putting money away to make sure that when we're ready for one, we can, we can go out and get it. The fact that we are down three dogs is concerning to me. I, you know my, you know my love of not just the dogs, because I have one at home, but because having, having worked with that unit to, to look at how it can be successful and the amount of dedication that your office has shown that program. In order to keep it successful, it requires continued invest. it successful, it requires continued investments. And so, being able to, to plan for the long-term, I think, would be incredibly helpful. So obviously, not for this budget, but I certainly would like to see that move forward, similar to a apparatus acquisition plan. But if it's, if it's 25,000, gosh, I, I would love us to be able to get to that place where we can find you those 25,000 for bringing the numbers to the status quo that we're at, because that is the equivalent of another officer on the ground.
There's an additional cost with the, because the academy, the training for the dogs are gone, so it's a staffing shortage. It's a commitment. We need to have staffing to be able to give up an officer for five weeks, so there's a lot of cost besides dollars. But, but I love your suggestion. I think we should do that for our SWAT vehicle, for our bomb truck, for our big assets.
Now you're getting carried away.
I think to be able to know that we're going to have to replace that someday, and have, have the, kind of, to your point, have a way to think long-term, because all those things, including dogs, need to get replaced at some point.
Absolutely. I'd like us to see a different way of looking at this, so that we can really work on, on the fleet and those assets. Thank you, those are all my questions.
Thank you Supervisor Ramos. Supervisor Manfree.
Okay, thank you. I just very quickly wanted to echo Supervisor Gallagher's comment that performance measures for bike and pedestrian friendliness in our planning efforts would be helpful for tracking as we're moving toward those goals. Thanks.
Thank you. I will add my echo to that as well. I appreciate Cara, your comments and the letter. I think that's really helpful. So with that, okay, that brings us through the general fund. Are there questions on any of the special revenue funds? Let me rephrase that. Questions that you want to ask tonight versus tomorrow? Supervisor Alessio.
This is not a tonight question. This is an aspirational question for Director Yasamoto. You know, you bring up all the, the long list of unfunded or underfunded mandates and programs that we provide for the most vulnerable in our communities, to keep our community health and safe, right? I'm wondering at some point, if, maybe you've done this in the past, if we know what that total amount is. You know, if you've added all those unfunded costs, expenses, if we know what that overall nut is? I think it's not something we can fix in this budget, but I think it's for us, it's very helpful for us to know what that impact, financial impact that's having on, on your departments, on the budget. And then, on the other, which would be a case study, is what would it cost if we did nothing? How would, how would a client, what would the cost be if the client is somebody who would be receiving these services if they weren't there? In terms of impact, public safety, the sheriff's department, the police department, the ER, the, all those different areas, the hospital, the crisis center, the jail, because additionally, because I think it's important for us to be able to state our case of, A, this is what we're doing without the funds, and B, if we weren't doing this with what we have without these funds, this is what it would cost not just us, but the state. And so, it's a little bit less of, it's a less of a budget item, though I do think it's, I do think it's important for us to have that understanding. And it doesn't have to be with this budget cycle, it's more, maybe it's more of a request to come back and for us to understand that at a later date. But I think that's, that's important, because we're doing quantifiable work without the quantity of dollars to do it. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Alessio. I think I would add my comment, append mine to yours. Again, it's not as budget-specific as much as, you know, we've heard so much from what Director Yasamoto talked about unfunded and underfunded mandates. I mean, that really, any legislative platform we want to pursue in the year ahead, years ahead, I think, really needs to focus on that. And Supervisor Ramos, I know that this has been an area where you're interested in working. So I just, it feels like an organizing principle for any legislative advocacy work that we want to do. So just wanted to make that observation. I'm not seeing other lights lighting up on funds, so I'm going to move us right ahead to, and we talked about maybe diving more into capital projects tomorrow morning, if that works for people. So I will go ahead and just ask if there's, on internal service funds, are there questions that people have for this evening? There's a lot of stickies over there that we're prepared to address tomorrow. Excellent, okay.
We'll be ready for them.
Okay, great. Okay, so I'm sensing that people are interested in wrapping up in general. Okay, okay, so let's go ahead. I will, at this point, I will go ahead and we will continue the public hearing till tomorrow, June 17, 2025, at 9:00 a.m. And I will go ahead and adjourn this meeting until that time tomorrow. Thank you.[1724.37]